I have the order to start with Flynn.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Teresa, take your role, please.
Hey, Mayor Jones.
Here.
Brenneman.
Here.
Bowen.
Here.
Wasslerger.
Here.
Mattson.
Here.
And Piel and Jazz are absolute convos.
All right. Do we have any additions or an approval of the agenda?
We'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote Bowen.
Yes.
Brenneman.
Yes.
Mattson.
Yes.
Wasslerger.
Yes.
All right. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes from the 11:21 meeting?
Motion to approve minutes?
Wasslerger. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote Wasslerger.
Yes.
Mattson.
Yes.
Brenneman.
Yep.
Bowen.
Yes.
All right. No bills, Karen?
No bills.
All right. Public comment? Anybody that has anything that's not on the agenda? Seeing none? This isn't a 7:05, so I don't have to wait, right?
Nope. Correct. Yep.
All right. Next up, hearing applications, resolutions. First one is a resolution 2023-23, authorize issue of revenue bonds for an SRF loan in the amount of $5,750,000. This is for our additional we need for our wastewater treatment plant.
This is on our second SRF loan.
Yes.
This basically allows the bond council to go out and sell bonds for the loan, which is required.
And we are, this does not mean that we're kicking in a surcharge until we need to use this money.
Right. Right. We, like talked about before, I mean, it does require a surcharge, but we don't have to enact that until we get closer. We need to draw these funds, which hopefully will be either next year, maybe 2025. Yeah.
Let's go for that.
And so hopefully we'll have more accounts, and that'll be a less, less dollar amount. But this is just so bond council can issue the bonds.
All right.
It was drafted by our bond council, Meyer Henry.
Meyer Henry. Yep.
And it's a fixed, fixed rate?
Yep.
And because it's an SRF, we are required by the terms of that loan to
Yep.
surcharge to guarantee the loan, basically.
Exactly.
Right?
Yep. The state wouldn't issue it unless we enact that surcharge, because that's our guaranteed payment. We don't have enough system revenues coming in to cover.
Yep. All right.
I make a motion to approve resolution 2023-23, authorize issue of revenue bonds for an SRF loan.
Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote Bowen.
Yes.
Brenneman.
Yes.
Mattson.
Yes.
Wasslerger.
Yes.
All right. Next one up is to review approved county plat for lots 8A and B in block one of Brower's second addition. P&amp;Z dealt with this and approved.
Yep.
This is because this is in our plating jurisdiction.
Correct. So this is in the Brower addition across the interstate. It's not in city limits, but it is in our plating jurisdiction. So the procedure is P&amp;Z got to approve it. City council has to approve it before they can actually then take it to the county. And this lot is basically for a lot that the main road, when you come in, if you go all the way to the east end, there's a, kind of, there's one shop at the very end. It's on that parcel, and they're splitting that parcel in two. I don't know if they have any plans for the one that doesn't have the building, or if they kind of sell off or build something else. But it's that same owner for the one parcel, he's splitting it into two.
Okay. And they have signed the pre-anализation here?
Yes. Yes, they've gotten pre-anализation.
All right. Any action from the council?
Make a motion to approve county plat for lots 8A and B in block one of Brower's second addition.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote Wasslerger.
Yes.
Mattson.
Yes.
Brenneman.
Yes.
Bowen.
Yes.
All right. The next one. Review approved, the county plat, track one of West Central School District's second addition. This is on the land that they bought just south of Mickelson Road.
So the, the road going into the city lagoons, it's a parcel that we could see it by the plat. It is just east of there. That land, too, is not in city limits at the present time, so same thing. It's still though in our plating jurisdiction, so need approval from the city before they can move on to the county.
Is there plans to annex that land into the city?
I, I think future plans, yeah, once it gets developed. Obviously, from the name of it, you can tell West Central School District is going to be purchased Right. of land, but they bought a plat at first, and then they could close on the property.
I didn't realize that wasn't a part of the, yeah.
Basically, everything from the road going to our lagoons, almost to Turtle Creek.
Is county.
Is county. Yeah. It's not part of the city of where all that far ground is.
Yeah.
Yep. That's still in the county. One thing that I did note in my report, if you saw, you know, when we put in Mickelson Road, there are some delayed assessments against that portion. And part of our agreement before we did Mickelson Road with the owners is that if at any time they platted out, develop it, subdivide it, those assessments are due. So there will be a portion due with this plat, and it goes by the linear foot in the amount they're plating off. So we will, when they close on that, collect some delayed assessments on that.
And then at some future meeting when that all happens, we'll have a discussion about what we're going to do with that money.
Yeah. There's a chunk coming in, so it'll go into the general fund directly. But if we want to apply it towards paying off the loan, or, you know, however you guys want to handle that, we can decide at that point.
All right. Any further discussion or action from the council?
Motion to approve track one, school district, second addition.
Second.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote Wasslerger.
Yes.
Mattson.
Yes.
Brenneman.
Yes.
Bowen.
Yes.
All right. Up next, we have Minnetonka County Sheriff's report. Deputy, Deputy Curtis is here. Good to see you this evening.
Evening, everybody. Well, sorry for the delay, being late, and also for not being here the last few months. So thank you for the gift from City Hall regarding our family emergency that we had about a month ago. So nothing really too much to report. Everything's going really good in the city. Nothing really concerning. It's kind of same old, same old with traffic stops and, you know, nothing too concerning, like I was talking to the mayor about. There's really just nothing going on. Like, so things are good. Things are safe here in Hartford. Regarding the call for services, within the 30 days, we had 243, which is about eight calls a day, which was a decrease from the, from last month, where we had 31 days. We had a decrease of 20, so really not too much to report going on in the city Hartford.
Any questions for the deputy?
I do.
Yep.
What's the, I guess, the law regarding delivery vehicles parking against oncoming traffic when they're making deliveries?
Yeah, I don't know. My mom was a letting carrier for 30 something years, and I know that's not something that, you know, that they're, that they practice, that they, you know, park correctly and stuff. And I think probably what it would take to see correction from that would be to talk to, like, Amazon FedEx. They're off Sixth Street North to say, hey, in these small towns, you can't just park wherever you want or stop in the middle of the road to make these deliveries, kind of, because it is kind of atrocious or whatever, or, uh, upon it. You know, personally, I don't make stops for me, because by the time I see it, there are already out of the car and back in the truck moving, so they're just not creating a hazard or anything like that. But if that's something we want to see clean up, happy to make a couple of calls.
It is in our ordinance, though, that you can't park against traffic. I mean, you're not supposed to.
So.
Well, the problem is, I mean, there's zigzag down the road.
Right.
It kind of bothers me for some dumb reason, but.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, our ordinance, we're not supposed to, but like I said, it's hard to catch. It's hard to catch them unless you actually talk to the driver and, yeah.
Right. And so many of these guys are contract carriers, man. I don't know. You can talk to Amazon FedEx.
They're all over now this Christmas.
Most of them are contract carriers. I don't know how that would get down chain. That's the problem.
Are the only solutions I can.
It'd be, you'd have to catch those, yeah, you'd have to catch those drivers.
Or take them, or we make them get a license to deliver.
Right. Tonight, right on, on Teresa Street on Emma, there was a FedEx truck right down from you. Car on his side, car on the other side, he's parked, going against the traffic. And I had everything I could do to get through. So, yeah, Mark's right. It's, it's problem that.
They usually park in the middle of our road.
Yeah.
Or my driveway.
Yeah.
Take it off.
Yeah.
And then they just walk.
So you can't just, I mean, maybe if we happen to catch one of them guys and just say, hey, you know, you know you can't do this. So.
For sure.
I mean. Right?
Yeah. Yeah. It's just a gap, yeah.
I mean, one example, I seen their part at me in second, going against traffic. So you're at a stop sign, you got a car facing the wrong way, and if people want to turn that way, I mean, it doesn't.
Sounds okay.
I don't know.
Yeah, for sure. You would need that.
Okay.
Awesome.
All right. Anything else for the deputy? Thank you very much for your good work.
Thank you.
Chamber of Economic Development Director Amy Vaughn?
Thank you. The ambassador committee actually met this morning and reviewed about 47 different renewal calls that they'll be placing. So they each took between, I would say, nine and 11 to fulfill those calls by the end of January. So they're excited to do that. And then events and marketing, they're working on the burger battle as well as the annual banquet. We just celebrated hometown Christmases last week. It went really well. Great volunteers that made that event successful. Continuing to add promotional items or social media posts, I should say, promoting shop, small shop, local, that kind of thing, since the Christmas season is here, and trying to promote Always By Chamber to continue to support the Chamber members. We do have an upcoming ribbon cutting for the Hartford senior citizens next Thursday at 11:15. So hope everyone can join us for the Chamber side. I believe that is it. Other than, we just had a very successful progressive mixer, where you could go to bus.pacmix and Girl Pot, or you could start wherever you wanted to, but it gave you an opportunity to go to three different businesses in a two-hour time period. And it was well attended, I think. And a nice video was done as well and posted to social media already. So that would be it there. For economic development, continued efforts, meeting with different landowners as well as prospective businesses that may or may not choose to do business here in Hartford and looking for land options, meeting with them constantly as they come up. And then, let's see here, we had our annual meeting for both the Chamber and Economic Development Foundation. Both was well attended with about 40 people at both events. Tomorrow, I'll be participating in another driver Zoom call, and I'm actually the keynote speaker for this one, I guess. Got a call last week asking me to do that, so I'll do that. The new housing study has been sent to us as a draft format right now. The Development Foundation Board will be reviewing that tomorrow night, and then we'll make some adjustments to it possibly, and then we'll get it over to Pat to finish the finalization of that. If any of you would like to see it prior to that, I can certainly send that to you as well. Let's see here. That's it there. My attendance for last week's Matsy Competitive Conference. At that conference, they touched on a number of different things. One was childcare, which was interesting. It was about how we could help the childcare situation with kind of a tri-share, it was called, in this one county. And what it does is the employee pays for, or the employer pays for a little bit of the employee, as the parent does, and then the state would chip in some money, so that's how they get that tri-share. So that was interesting, how they were trying to work that, and they had a panel of individuals talking about the differences on that and the changes they've seen. They talked about rebuilding different communities that were there. One was viewing city. They saw the decline, and then they had to take it out. And there was several different problems with infrastructure and everything. They got that cleared away, but the cost was substantial. So then they found some grants in different areas and was able to do that. And then they rebuilt it up, starting with a Lear manufacturing plant, and then from there, it kind of just went on from there. They talked about, gosh, sports. Back in 1979, Indianapolis started the first, I guess, convention, visitors bureau, sports entertainment area. And then by 1980, they actually held the first Final Four competition there. And then it went on from there, and actually in 2024, they are looking to hold the U.S. Olympic swim team there. So they're changing out their platform to fit in huge pools to accommodate that. They talked about location trends, about international trade. We had two people from Germany there, talked about what Germans want to see when they do a site selection process. They say what we do is different from what they do, and they gave us kind of insight of what they would like to see when they come here. Other than that, I guess that's kind of it in a nutshell. Had great meetings with the people there, met with GOED representatives, Sioux Falls Development Foundation, Sioux Metro Growth Alliance, people from, let's see, North Sioux City, Indianapolis, Michigan, Wyoming. I mean, just a handful of different people in the area, so it's well attended.
Awesome. Questions for Amy?
I don't have any questions or comment, and I'd send Art in this picture. Hartford had like a 20% growth in our tax revenue from last October.
Yep.
Out of 16 communities, there was only like
Two.
Valley Springs had 17, and the other one was
Dells had like
Dells had, or sorry, Centerville had a 50%.
Oh, yeah.
But, you know, it's
$12 were low, though, so any
Yeah.
Doesn't take much to
No, but like ours went from 147 to 171, 20% growth. And I think partially because of that, I think because of, I think we've got a strong, a strong feeling in this community of buy local. And so I think a lot of that is driven by probably having a solid chamber, so I'm not going to have a question. I'm just making a comment.
No, that's great.
With all, with a lot of these other communities seeing really low economic or tax revenue, we're, we're doing pretty darn well, so.
I saw that, got the same thing.
Yeah.
Yep. Yep. All right. Anything else for Amy? None. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. City Engineering Report, Mr. Michael.
Good evening, everyone. A quick one tonight, since last meeting. Reviewed a few plats, recommended approval on those, including the two that you just approved within the county, the plating area, and then as well as a third one within city limits. Big project updates, as same as last time, is on the water rec facility. So they have finished pouring the slab of the aerobot tanks as well as the slab for the lift station. As Sean mentioned, they have started the rebar for the walls of the tank. Our end other focuses on the lift station, just with site works, starting install of the force main and outfall later this week. They want to ensure that there is a connection point for them once they get there later this winter. With that, that's the only updates I have on that for ours. It's moving along well. Included a couple of photos that Rice took, but they're going at the bottom of their report, just so you can see the scale of it a little bit up close. I believe those were taken middle, end of November, so there's still been quite a bit that's been done since those were taken. Any questions on my table?
If you haven't been out there, you have to check in. Well, there was nobody there. We couldn't check in.
We tried to check in, but
We tried to check in, but nobody's there. Teresa and I were coming back from a meeting in Sioux Falls, and we stopped it. It's pretty impressive to walk, look, look over the edge.
Yeah, it's definitely a waste down there.
Yeah. There's, yeah, there's a lot of concrete going to be poured.
Pretty early.
Yeah, they said they've already poured 1,700 cubic yards of concrete, just in that base slab.
So that's why they have to pay slab, discover. All right.
If there are no questions, Price Lake does have a pay request number two for your consideration in the amount of $1,541,827.00, not a sport worked completed to date. With that, we've updated the contingency tracker, which accidentally has any change. So this will mainly say you will generate additional contingency of $117,000 for a total of $417,000. Any questions regarding the pay request?
I don't think so. Well, any, we'll need action from the council to approve that.
Make a motion to approve pay request number two to Rice Lake Construction for the wastewater treatment facility project.
Second.
Any more discussion? Another thing we should do at some point, I know Teresa, that should be here, reported Michael in yours. As we're doing these pages, just give us a running total, just so we have it.
Running total for pay requests.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just, just so we know, so every time we're doing it, we can say, okay, we're a third of the way there, or a half.
Some of those big numbers add up.
She was.
I will say on the pay request form.
Is it on there?
Yeah.
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 It's on.
It is on there. Okay, where do I lost?
For change.
Correctly. So if you look on the very first page, if you look on the right-hand side, it'll tell you what the original contract price is. And then, you know, basically, you know.
Oh, yeah. 21. Okay.
Number seven.
Oh, yeah. Line seven is the
It's what we picked.
First.
First.
Line six is the amount, a little bit of today, that then gives the 2.7.
Is that the two together? Okay. All right. Got it. Don't worry about it, then. All right. Did we get a motion, or was I?
I seconded it.
Yep.
Was I worrying about something else? Any other discussion? If not, we'll vote Wasslerger.
Yes.
Mattson.
Yes.
Brenneman.
Yes.
Bowen.
Yes.
All right. Anything else for Michael?
Thank you.
Matt. Karen will call me tomorrow and say, whenever you got time to come down and sign this very big check. That's how this usually works. Okay. And Craig just got out of the meeting.
I'd say he went to the township meeting again, so I'll see if we get any further with him this whole round.
So we need anything. He might, he might be back.
He might be back, yeah.
All right. Karen, we'll go to your report. Anything bad?
Not bad. Reports in the packet unless you have questions.
Nice to see some cash on hand. Tell tomorrow, don't we write that check for 1.5 million? I see you added next year's council meetings.
Yep. And all the boards.
Yep. All right. All right. Any questions for Karen, any of you guys, or Gal, or the counselors, or whatever I should be calling you correctly? All right. Hearing none. Teresa?
On my report, Michael already gave you the update on the projects. I did put some information, Art alluded to. We did go into town last week. There was a legislative session, basically Sioux Falls put it on, invited area municipality representatives. And there was a bunch of the legislatures there, talking about topics that are coming up for the next session. In your packet is those 2024 legislative priorities. Sioux Falls kind of put together this list of what was important to municipalities and what they would like to see, you know, happen. One, seven, and nine, I think are kind of very relevant to us as far as, you know, the sales tax and basically, you know, publication for municipalities. Those things are always kind of in our forefront, so just thought that information would be good for you to know. Municipally always, you know, goes out there every year to lobby on behalf of municipalities, and they always give us the weekly update. So once again, I'll be sending a note out to you guys, kind of keep you informed of what's going on and kind of keep abreast of that.
Can I, I'll make one point.
Okay.
One of the biggest things on this was there was quite the discussion about the president. And they were all kind of, not yelling, but kind of yelling at the
A little snippy.
bear from Bearishburg. And finally, he says, wait a minute, you know? It was kind of, I thought, what in the heck are you guys all yelling at him for? Like it was his idea.
Yeah.
I was kind of
He, he kind of just made the point that it would have been nice if you would have some communication from the state, you know, ahead of time, that this is what they're looking at, or what, because, because like us or with everybody else, you know, states wasn't saying anything to anybody, you know, what they're looking at as far as land, and so.
What were they unhappy with him about?
They just thought that it was his idea that it ended up down in Lake County, basically, that he, and he kept saying to them, I have nothing to do with this deal.
Right. They said they weren't contented, just like
Yeah.
the Hollis and
It was, it was odd. I thought it was real. And finally, he just said, wait a minute, you know? Basically, he said, no, back off. I, this isn't my deal, you know?
Yeah, and then they were kind of upset with them that, you know, there's a group of citizens that have a lawsuit. And they were kind of upset with people about that. And once again, he says, I don't have anything to do with that.
Um, I noticed today in the, I listened to a portion after you sent me that, no, I listened to a portion of the governor's budget address. All she said was men's prison in the Sioux Falls area. Did you catch that? That's all she said. She didn't specify a location. That's all she said. So I found that was kind of interesting, anyway. So, all right, that's
Yeah, so that update, I haven't seen anything yet as far as any updates or drafts to the employee manual. They said it'd take them about a month to get through it, so since we get something from them, we'll review that. Rural Water MCWC, just want to let you know, I have had some communication this week from them. I have sent them, you know, we have put together a future allocation, so again, we, you know, as far as all the evidence we had, if it all develops out, this is what we kind of predict we would need for water. Just so as we talk about our contracts, we can kind of justify the amount of water we will need at some point. We had sent one earlier to them. We, after that fact, we had annexed in the Jastrom land. So I added that and sent that to Scott Bus as well this past week. Asked him, you know, when we had last met with him, I said, he had made some kind of comment about, you know, maybe he would like to get the municipalities together to say, you know, this is how much water we got, how are we going to allocate? Kind of get us all in a group. Asked him if that was still going to happen, or when the board was going to discuss, you know, our contracts or whatnot. He said at this point, he hasn't, there's no plans yet to get any of the communities together, and that January, February, they're going to look at their allocations, and they'll be contacting each municipality to negotiate the contracts. So looking at January.
When's our contract up? Is that at the end of next year?
It's at the end of this year, actually. They said they will honor the contract until a new contract can get renegotiated. Yep.
And remind me again, the first conversation, you and Craig, and was Amy involved in that?
Yep, yeah, we created Amy here.
What did you guys kind of softly throw out there for an ask?
Well, basically, we told them
Gallon per gallon per day.
So we had taken, you know, figured out, you know, what we think we need future, and I think that was 1.2 somewhere right in there would show what we needed on top of what we're already getting, you know, the 600,000. So that definitely justifies our current contract. So we said, you know, at the very least, we do not want to lose any gallons, because there was talk about taking some of our gallons and giving them to Dells.
Well, right now, we're contracted at 2 million gallons per day, right?
Right, because so that 1.2 plus our 600,000 we're using, we're almost at that. If, if we were, and it's going to take years to fully develop out, but at some point, we're going to need that. When we added the Jastrom land, we have 1.5 on top of, you know, in addition to our current. So I think we can justify, definitely keep in our contract as
Well, and I think like in that, and I, I'm passionate about this water stuff, as everyone knows up here.
That's a big deal.
And so in my mind, once again, I don't, I don't think asking for the same of what we've had for the last 20 years is beneficial.
Oh, it would be great to have more.
Right. What I'm saying is, is that I know it's going to be hard. Everybody's saying that. But my thing is, is that we should be asking for three. I know, I know, I've heard all the noise. I was at the HADF meeting a year ago when, when that guy was there with Rural Water. I know, I know that song and dance, but I think, I think we should be a little bit aggressive in playing ball in front of this, asking for three. I don't, I don't think that's out of the question.
So the reason they're not negotiating contracts until January, February is at that time, they will know how much their build out is going to cost, and so they'll know how much, they're going to charge you for any extra to your contract.
And that was like, was it 20 million?
Yeah.
Was it 20 million for an additional?
8 million for every million.
And that's the, and that's in addition to, like, let's just say they came back and they're going to give us two and a half. If we want three and a half, it's an additional 20 million.
It's going to be an additional.
But if they come back
It's what they're talking about.
But if they come back and say, we'll give you guys 3 million. But if they come back and say, we'll give you guys three million, it's not, it's not costing us twenty million if we contract at three million gallons per day.
You would be paying up to that, you'll have an additional cost, and keep in mind, they also talked that if we have to store water, we might get charged for that as well.
Yeah, if we have water that's not being used, so say we're only using our six hundred thousand gallons, the rest of our contract amount, they're talking about charging us for that water just sitting there, that they're holding for us. What that amount, they never threw out.
Sounds like a.
So Teresa, do we have a legislature on this new charge allocation for future?
The one that we just created?
No, so we'll have to add that to this list then, too, more than likely.
I like that idea, though, Amy, I think we should ask, I mean, in negotiations, I think it's a wise thing to be, to, you know, we want to kind of shoot for the moon on this thing, because these contracts are for twenty years.
Yep.
We have no idea what Hartford's going to look like in twenty years. We have no idea, so I just.
But, yeah, we got to be careful not to, not to shoot for the moon and then have them say, now your price per gallon goes up X, and we have to turn around to our citizens and say, yeah, we don't really need this now, but we need this in the future, so your water now is going to cost you more, we would probably pack this, council room, I hate to say that, I'm not trying to be a smart aleck, but I get. Yeah, we got surcharges going on for our wastewater treatment plant, we're going to be whapping our citizens hard enough. I don't know that I want to, I get, I hear what you're saying, we got to be as aggressive as we can, but there's got to be a line where we're going to have to be comfortable.
Interesting to see what they come with.
Yes.
Exactly, yeah. And that's it, they're waiting till January, February timeframe, so they'll know their build out, and I bet they will come back to us and say, yes, it's going to cost you X amount of dollars to get more or whatnot, or we're going to charge you for water we store, we'll have a lot more information at that point, but I guarantee water's a big deal, and you want to.
There's a balance there, but it's, it's a hot commodity.
And I would be curious, because in that, in the Gnome's speech, in her budget proposal, there was some allocation for funds for this, for waste, or for water, so I'd be curious, see, what does that mean? I mean, it's very general, but I'd be curious, you can reach out to one of our legislators.
And that. We'll be seeing him on Thursday morning.
Oh, that's right.
Sorry, I didn't.
No, no.
I'm afraid to say that, but they'll be in Hartford on Thursday morning, the legislative session.
All right. What else?
The only other thing that it's on my report, because when I was talking with Scott with Rural Water, we have to fill out, he would like our water application for the water line that needs to service our, our plant, our new plant, I think he would like that application turned in as soon as we can, just so they can get it in their scheduled date with work orders and whatnot, so I would probably, if it's okay with the council, there's a twenty-five hundred dollar application fee, I'll have Karen do a prepay if you're all okay with it, because that's required.
We got a water application.
Yeah, exactly, it's part of the project, but I just wanted you guys to be aware of it, I'll, I'll have her do a prepay for, that'd be another check you could sign tomorrow. But he says, the sooner you get it in, the better, because then they can do their work order, get crews out there to get it going, yeah.
All right.
Remember the Christmas party?
Yeah, Christmas party, certainly that.
What time? Seven or seven thirty?
Six.
Six is social right at three thirty. Social meals at six thirty.
Boy, there's going to be a grade. The first game is great, you don't want to miss.
Special game.
All right. Thank you, Teresa. All right, we're going to move on to new business. Stephanie is here from the library, Suland Library, to talk to us about a project that they would like us to be involved in.
I think it's in your packet, a few pictures of what this project is. Suland Libraries does story walks, where kids can walk by and read a story, and usually we use old campaign signs that we just staked into the ground. With this new story walk, it's per, it's semi-permanent, I mean, you can't take it down, but it's on concrete, in the ground, on metal pedestals, and it's built so it allows us to swap the story out, and we're planning to swap it out twelve times a year, so that each month, somebody could visit the park and get a fresh story. We are planning for twenty panels, most stories are nineteen, and that leaves us a panel to face and advertise the library. We think the perfect location is Turtle Creek Park. It has a trail, it has a bridge, kids love it, and this would be one more reason for people to come down and use the park. Suland Libraries will help pay for the panels, and we will pay for the concrete to get it installed. We will also keep it clean, go by and wash the panels, and keep them nice, and switch up the stories. We would just need some help getting them installed in the ground, the physical labor. And if that isn't possible, then we move to plan B, and we would just have to try to round up some funding at some point to do it.
And we talked, Teresa and I talked, and she's talked with Craig, and I believe we're going to, you guys are paying for all the stuff, I think we can find the manpower to get them, get them put in.
We'd be a big bill, we'd have a whole digger, a day, we could probably get them all installed and then solve.
Yes. And that way, they'll know where they want to keep, because they want to keep them away from the trails.
Yeah, they want to keep them a little bit back, so when they pile the trail, the snow won't.
They run through there with the skid steer during the winter, we don't want them peeling them off.
Yes.
You said twelve times a year?
Yes.
So, so once a month, you're putting in a new story?
Yeah, our directors have to do that.
That's more than what I, I thought, I thought you said three or four times a year, so it's twelve. Twelve times, it's great.
It is.
I just think this is a great idea.
I, I like it. Yeah, I think it's a great idea, too.
So really, all we need from the council is, is an approval to go forward, and we would have the city crew put the concrete in so these can be installed.
I make a motion to approve placement of storybook kiosk in Turtle Creek Park.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote, Bowen.
Yes.
Yeah. Missed the city staff part.
Oh, I, did we have that, did their city staff do it?
I think you move forward with placing either one of the cities.
Hold on.
Okay, I'm going to amend.
Amending motion?
Okay. I make a motion to approve, let me scroll up here to make sure I get my words right, to approve the placement of storybook kiosks provided by Suland Libraries with the city of Hartford staff installing them. I'll second.
Second, the amended motion?
Yep.
Any other discussion? Thanks, Mark.
I did the same thing.
All right. All right. Hearing none, we'll vote, Bowen.
Yes.
Brenneman.
Yes.
Now you're all right. That's it.
Yes.
Woslaw. Okay. Stephanie, thank you.
Hey, what's the first story you're going to have in there, you think?
Oh, sorry, Sarah is picking them out, she's looking at a winter theme.
Oh, wonderful.
Be back in January with an annual library part, and I'll give you the title of the first story.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Mark, about the first story, I'm sorry, Sarah, sorry, Sarah. I didn't know that was a walk, I don't remember that one as a kid.
Sounds depressing.
Thank you, Stephanie. All right, next review approved, the twenty twenty-four county sheriff agreement for police protection. This is not for our deputy cardis, this is for the, or is it for both?
No, no. This is just for the hundred hours, yeah, evenings and weekends that we contract with the county.
The price went up a little bit, it looks like?
Went up three dollars an hour, basic services, but we did know this amount when we did budget, because they told us it was going to go up, so the amount of the contract is what we have in budget for twenty twenty-four.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-four county sheriff agreement for police services.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote, Woslaw, because that's a friend of mine, Bowen.
Yes.
All right. Thank you, deputy cardis and all your guys, I think that's a great plus for our community. Next, tax abatement for parcel eight, seven, zero, one, zero. Property purchased twelve fifteen, the tax abatement amount, nine hundred and twenty-two dollars and fifty-six cents.
And the reason for the abatement is that it's a tax exempt entity that owns it, or that purchased it, so it's just clearing the tax of all.
Make a motion to approve the tax abatement for parcel eight, seven, zero, one, zero.
Do we have a second?
I'll take a precaution.
All right. Any discussion?
Make a little more summary on that.
Yeah.
So they purchased the land, is this the land we just applied, or?
No, no, so I don't, I don't think it's any big secret, we're supposed to block out the HDF, but it's the HADF, and they purchased their land, HADF is an economic development corporation, so they're tax exempt, so. The county, to me, the county kind of does things in the rears, they, they keep the tax on there until you apply to take the tax off, well, to me, if an exempt entity purchases it, you should just take the tax off, but you got to go through this process to get approval to take it off, and then here going forward, I mean, it won't show up.
In which land is this?
The HADF.
On Western Avenue.
Oh, on Western, okay. I was looking at the map, okay.
Well, it's kind of their process, because they keep the tax on it until you apply to take the tax off, which they, JDF, had to do, and so the process is, okay, we've got this application to take it off, it comes to the city and goes to them, and, you know.
But why is the previous owner of the land not paid the taxes?
They paid up, they did pay the taxes up till the purchase date.
Okay.
But then, the county still kept the taxes, you know, like I said, they don't recognize the HADF as a tax exempt entity until they apply for it, being a tax exempt, they, they keep taxing the property until we go through this process. I think it's kind of in.
And we have to submit our paperwork before November first of, over here, for this process.
The previous owner paid the taxes that were due in the last tax year, correct?
Right, so the land was purchased, because taxes are always in the rear.
The twenty twenty-two taxes that are.
They paid the twenty twenty-two, these are the.
Twenty twenty-two taxes that are payable in twenty twenty-three, this year, yeah. I said, I think they kind of do stuff backwards, but you would think that once they see it's a taxes entity that purchased it, they just stop charging taxes, but that's not how they do it, they make the entity apply to get.
Keep jumping.
Yep, yep. It's the same thing when the city purchases ground, so, you know, we're tax exempt as well. I had to fill out paper, Karen, I think I should fill out paper, to send it to the county to take the taxes off, so we don't get charged, otherwise, they'll just keep charging you, the county will.
It's almost no different than owner occupied, occupied, basically.
Right, you got to file for that status to get it, so you got to file for a tax exempt status, so that we take the taxes off.
Built a house, that you're the owner, right?
Exactly. Yeah.
All right. Anything else? All right, we have motion of second. We'll vote, Bowen.
Yes.
Brenneman.
Yep.
That's it.
Yes.
Woslaw.
Yes.
All right. Next up is extension of professional contracts for one year from January one to December thirty-one of twenty twenty-four, for our legal and professional services. First, we'll do these separately, first one will talk about the ISG as our engineer, I would ask for approval of ISG as our engineering provider for the next year.
So, so just to be clear, it's not appointing them as our providers, because we did that in September, this is just approving their contracts, which basically sets their rates and the terms and conditions.
I'm confused then.
Yeah. It's funny, Karen, I was going to say.
I'm confused.
I'm sorry, I should have read this closer, I thought this was.
We appointed them in September.
We do approve them in September.
Yes, to be honest.
Why do we do them on different dates?
Their contract years, I don't know. It used to always be, we appointed everybody in May with our newspaper and everything, and then when Jeremy came as mayor, he thought, for new mayor coming in, it would just, they, they're not, they don't know the attorney engineer, wanted to give them time to get to know them, so then we moved that, pointing to those two, to September, which we did in September, but this is for their contract, so basically, the, you know, the services they provide us at the rates they provide us, and those run the fiscal year, January to December.
Okay, I'm confused, okay.
Possible ISG and.
Well, I don't have to bring or appoint or anything, I'll have to ask for a motion.
We do need a motion from the council to extend it for another year. I put their current contracts in there, last time we did it was in twenty twenty-one, we renewed them last year, I mean, the same terms and rates, contacted both of them again this year, saying, do you want to propose any changes or whatnot, they said they are comfortable with keeping the same terms and rates as well, so we would just need a motion to extend it for another year, for twenty twenty-four.
In the background, say we can do them both at once. Is there any action from the council?
I'm making a motion to approve contracts presented by Chief Ann Freeper Nelson and Ask.
Any more discussion? Sorry about that, I read that wrong. And we even talked about it tonight.
Yeah.
I was confused, I'm sorry, I should have.
Nope.
All right, hearing no discussion, we'll vote, Bowen.
Yes.
Brenneman.
Yep.
That's it.
Yes.
Woslaw. All right, next up, mayoral appointment for the interview committee for the chamber of commerce part-time position, I would like to appoint Sean Bowen to that position, and would ask for council to approve that appointment.
Make a motion to approve mayor appointment for Sean Bowen.
Any discussion? You can't abstain, because there's a lot of purpose here.
I understand that, I mean, I. Can I, I can vote on this, so.
Right. Well, legend won't last, so. I'm giving him a minute. Woslaw.
Yes.
Maxson.
Yes.
Brenneman. Bowen.
Yes.
Yes, okay. I was scared there for a second. All right.
The, the other people on the committee, so, so.
Myself.
Sean's going to be on end, it'll be me and Amy for staff, and then for the chamber, it's going to be Ash and Matthews and Brittany Glancer.
Oh, Brittany, okay.
And so, my plan is that I will send out, we got fourteen out, because I'll send all the, to all the members of the interview committee to review, hopefully over the weekend, hopefully by Monday, we can cut it down to select the ones that we want to interview, there's a handful that, to me, are just, they don't even live, it's all the COVID that are not, you know, definitely not viable candidates, but maybe we'll get a list of who to interview, and then depending how many you want to do, hopefully maybe Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday next week or whatnot, we can, you know, get some interviews set up, and, you know, if all goes well, depending on how long it takes us to interview and get those set up, maybe we'll have a higher recommendation to the council by your next meeting, we'll see how it goes, but that's kind of the plan.
I'm just wondering, yeah, because that's kind of a quick time, I mean, I think it's good that we quick turnaround, but you know, these candidates have been sitting in this.
Yeah.
You know, I'd be curious on the fourteen, how many are actually left, or how many, you know, but should probably jump on it sooner than later.
Yes, yes, so that's what I'm going to, tomorrow morning, I'll email, ready, I'll send them all out to you guys, and hopefully you can review them over the next few days and move forward from there.
All right. Last item that we have under new business is discussion of holiday staff bonuses. You see in your packet, the amounts we've given in the past years. Wanted to throw this out to the council and see.
I think we went up the last chair.
Right. Stay easy, David.
I don't know, it's a hard question. I don't have any strong feelings, but I'm not opposed. I guess I'm going to, just for cause of discussion here, I'm not opposed at going up, you know. I'm not opposed. I guess I, I'm gonna just for cause of discussion here, I'm not opposed at going up, you know, um.
I think we'd love to get a, you know.
Right.
Triple or, go ahead, triple that, but at the same time, we went up, what is that, twenty-five percent last year?
Right.
Yeah.
Yep.
From the preview.
And our pattern looks like it was quite a while we stayed at that number, not only in cash, but in Hartford bucks, and then we went up last year. So, you know.
I think next year would be a lot easier.
Go off that mission. Yep, I agree. Okay, somebody wanna?
I'll make a motion to approve staff bonuses, amount of two hundred and fifty dollars.
Alright, any other discussion?
Cash or hurt?
Cash.
Cash.
Now, is that legit cash?
Yeah.
Perfect.
Green.
I wish we could get paid in cash for city council, that'd be.
Each meeting. Just have. Just have Karen sit over there with, have Karen sit there with a piezer and a low deal and.
Okay.
We got a motion to discuss it.
Five minutes. Comments, whatever you don't think of Hartford bucks.
Um, Hartford bucks have now switched.
They're in the chambers basket, to say.
Yeah.
But they're still available.
They're, they are still available.
I mean, you could do a hundred and twenty-five in Hartford bucks, a hundred and twenty-five in cash, or whatever you wanna do, I mean, or all chamber bucks.
I think it's all the same.
Okay, all the same.
I, I think the, the other reason it, it changes, we had a prior council member that says, well, I'd rather have cash and Hartford bucks in that, that year, then, okay, change to cash, and that's what happened. I mean, I, except, that'll spend the same, so I don't. I mean, I don't wanna speak for the whole staff, but I, I don't think staff really cares. I, I don't see our.
No, I just, the comments, the optics is, we're taking city money and possibly sending it.
Right, it, right, I can see Hartford bucks look like you're promoting, promoting the purchases here, yeah, exactly.
So.
And like I said, I, I don't think staff really care.
Strong feeling either way, we're working out here tonight, but it's been brought up to me since I had a brain job.
Alright, anything else? Not? Bowen.
Yes.
Brenneman.
Yep.
Mattson.
Yes.
Waslocker.
Yes.
Alright, uh, before we get to you, Craig, I got one other thing and this is gonna be quick. I've had this thought, I've mentioned it to a few of the council members. I'm gonna start working on what I'm gonna call the mayor's initiative. I don't know, I don't have it quite all fleshed out yet. Live Lively Initiative, I'm not sure what I'm gonna call it, but it's not gonna be infrastructure stuff, it's gonna be more aesthetic. What do we really need to do? And it's being driven by just some kind of common sense stuff. How many more streetlights do we need? What do we gotta do about this sidewalk deal? What do we need to do about increasing our bike pass? Pickleball court, all that stuff, kinda look at everything that's going on. And I'm gonna talk to a lot of people, I'm gonna talk to everybody on council, I'm gonna talk to everybody and just see what, this is kind of my five-year deal. This is gonna be kind of my last, uh, hurrah, I think.
I think some of it is parking rack.
Some of it's parking rack, some of it, I mean, I'm gonna try to talk to everybody, but I kinda wanna look, I wanna take a five-thousand-foot look at what's going on and see if we can make Hartford a better place to live. Okay?
I'm glad you have such high goals, man. I, it's, it's truly an aspiration.
I don't think anybody here is gonna disagree with on the sidewalks and streetlights.
Yeah.
Boy, I'll tell you what, Sunday night after the parade was a night opener for me walking down from Yiddo, back down here. We got some spots on Main Street that, I'm not kidding you.
All the older parts of town.
Holy smokes.
Yeah, between our parks and our schools and.
Yeah, so anyway, that's kind of what's driving this, so, anyway, we'll do that. Craig, let's have a little quick update on what happened.
Well, it started out bad and got worse, I guess. I started out, Matt said, he goes, well, I thought we, you said that last meeting that we weren't gonna work with us. I said, no. Last meeting, you guys were gonna put a contract together, some agreement together, and we were gonna try to work together. I said, but you called me the next day and told me that the deal was off. I said, that's where it got left at.
Who said that?
Uh, Matt Anderson. So, after some discussion, they start, we talked about streets and they, I told them what our interpretation from our attorney was, um, that what if we have it on both sides, it's the way the county works with it too, that it would be ours. But that if they're on one side and we're on the other, it still stays with the, the governing board that had the road before. So, they thought, yep, that's fine, whatever, but then they said, what about four sixty-five going to Anderson's? I said, well, that's about four hundred feet there, that's ours, and I said, the rest is yours. And he's like, nope, according to the county, you, you go and extend the road. I said, I don't think so, but, um, I said, where'd you hear it from? He said Jake Maris from, the engineer for the county. I said, so did he look at the GIS mapping? Is that where he got this interpretation from? He said, well, yeah. I said, did you go down the register deeds and actually find out and find out what the plots on it and find out who actually has this road? Well, no. I said, that's where you need to start. And, and they said, uh, well, maybe we need to get an attorney. I said, that would be best. You guys get an attorney and decide if you guys can figure out who owns what roads? Because I said, there's nothing in the state statute that really clarifies it. So, they're gonna get a lawyer. In the meantime, Greg Boggs said that for loan removal, they're gonna take care of the Colt Road, which we prayed with them before, so they're gonna take care of Colt Road, which is all theirs. Well, they don't agree with that either, but. And then they're gonna take, they'll do Anderson's, they said, this, until we get everything resolved, and they're gonna take Benton Road or Second Street going out of town.
Okay.
And they want us to do Mickelson Road, and he said, you could stop at your property. I said, damn right we will. So we'll be doing up to Arts and then we're turning around and coming back. So I'm gonna get a copy of their minutes, so we do have it on file, so that when we get into the removal, we are done with that, you know, so. And then they're gonna get their attorney and see if they can get an interpretation on what the state statute is on, who owns what roads.
So, second, Craig, are they just gonna go past those two houses and then we're gonna have to pick it up where Windsor group is?
I asked about that. I said, we own that next six hundred feet, seven hundred feet there. I said, you want us to drive over yours to get to ours? And they said, no, we'll just do the whole road, because always you're just gonna make a mess in our, our office. I said, that's fine.
Okay, cool. Yeah, we better get a copy of the minutes, cause I.
I was gonna, when I leave here, I'm gonna go back down and tell them to email me a copy of that minutes.
Yeah, that's.
If I can read down the career they use.
Yeah.
And, uh, so then I said, what about boring, or what about the cutting?
Right.
The road, nope, we're not gonna let you. Okay, and Boggs kinda fought with him. He said, this is just costing everybody money, because it's gonna cost the taxpayers money, it's gonna go up. And he said, it just makes no sense. He said, we're just keep pushing the people's money back and spending it foolishly. And the other two, somebody in the audience said, no, make a board. So, they said, no, we're not gonna let you cut it. You gotta board. So we might as well put our plans together and get rid of, get it out, so.
Okay.
So even though the roads are a responsibility, we can't?
Yeah, well, so that where we're gonna go across, do the open, or where we wanna do the open cut, that is actually a township road. That first, uh, hundred and fifty, two hundred feet, right around, around, is it, Ryder?
Yeah.
That, he's out of city limits. So, that first couple hundred feet there is township, and then it switches over to city road, and then it goes back to township road.
Can we annex Ryder in?
We could see if you would. I asked him, I asked him if we could take that road over and they wouldn't let us do that.
But if we annex Ryder, then it'd be ours.
We'd be on the other side.
Basically, Gary's right.
He'd wanna annex it, yeah, no way down.
Can we force it? If he has a way in behind him on the outside.
Forced annexation, you kinda go through that whole study.
Right.
Can you pay the fees or whatever for it? I mean, what is it, what, what, what is the downside for them?
Higher property tax.
Prefer taxes.
Something, maybe higher taxes.
Well, if we annex them in, then we have to give them, we provide them with sewer, right?
You.
Sewer and water.
You can make an agreement that we would when your septic system or something.
Went bad, yeah.
What, and they did say that, well, you know, if you'd waive that street maintenance fee, that, I said, no. I said, we're not waive, I said, are you gonna waive mine? I said, because I don't live in a township, I pay township fees. I said, then I didn't say that at the point. Pretty much after that. But it's, they're just, they're still just mad at the city because, and like Greg said, he said, all three of us signed it, all three of us could have read it. We, we should know it about the assessment fees for street maintenance fees, and he said, it was on us, he said, so.
And their fees are how much?
Six hundred.
Yeah.
Year year.
Nothing personal, but that's what, like a couple hours for the attorney?
Yeah.
Think of that, like.
Not very good use.
So it's, so it's in their lap.
Maybe somebody will do that at some point.
Well, when we get any word back from them, we'll have more, we'll have more discussion on that. So I thought the annexation, you know, it's by percentage, right? Or is that just?
Street maintenance.
I'm talking, so.
If you get a potential.
Pave and cut, cut it down, yeah.
If you get a potential too.
That's what, I gotta respect.
I'm sure it's a significant cost to bore versus cutting the road. I mean, is it, it's pretty significant?
Yeah, it's gonna be, probably since they're there, it'll be close to probably around eighty thousand.
Versus thirty or forty?
Yeah, well, yeah, potentially. Well, he said use a hundred for a fee number, but he said it's not gonna be that much.
Alright. Thanks, Greg. I, anything, anything else in regular meeting, cause I'd like to go, we need to go into executive for a few minutes. We talked about a couple things, so there's nothing else for the regular meeting. Let's say for economic development. Can we say all three, personnel and legal? Can we, I want you to stay, I want you to stay for a second, do Greg. Alright, you have a motion, somebody make.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session for economic development, personnel and legal.
Yep. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Okay.
Go to your.
All in favor?